Good evening and welcome. My name is Taylor Kingman and as President of the Board of Trustees of the San Angelo Independent School District, I would like to welcome all of you who are present tonight at our pre-agenda board meeting. We appreciate your interest in our district and the activities of our students. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most of the items on our agenda this evening will be discussed tonight and voted upon at a regular board meeting. As members of the SISD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public, not a meeting of the public. However, we do have a public comment item on our agenda that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team on an item that is not on our action agenda or an action agenda item the opportunity to do so. Please provide your name and contact information and the specific topic you wish to address on the public comment form located in the back of the room. Please listen carefully and comply with the following rules so that we can move through this part of the meeting efficiently. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes. The district will provide an official timekeeper. The district's timekeeper will report and record the time. You will be notified when your time is up. You are to stop speaking and return to your seat. Please respect the privacy of others and refrain from identifying students, employees, or other community members by name. Disruption of the meeting will not be tolerated at any time. Comments on any subject, whether positive or negative, must be courteous and respectful. Comments are limited to the specific topic you indicated on the form you filled out. Any speaker with a specific complaint about a district employee, decision, or operational issue should present that complaint through the appropriate mechanism, which is the district's formal grievance process. If you have a pending grievance being processed by the district, you will not be permitted to speak about the grievance during public comment. Also, please understand if you offer public comment that the board cannot reply to you except to thank you for your comments since the matter was not posted for discussion. I ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I also ask, as I remind my fellow board members, to please turn off or silence your cell phones. Again, thank you for being here and for your support of SISD. All right, we have a call this evening. Entire board team is present, so we are going to start with our pledges, and I will lead us in those this evening. Please stand.
Next on our agenda is public comment. Mr. Virgil Pasetti has signed up for the topic of budget.
Hello, my name is Virgil Pasetti. Concerned dad. Reason I wanted to bring up budget is because I know that it's going to be on the forefront here. I saw the item for next week's agenda was the pay raise that's going to be proposed to y'all, and then also covering the extra $50 on the insurance. So, you know, a 3% pay raise is going to be, you know, a little less than $3 million, and then covering the insurance is going to be approximately $1.3 million. And I know that last week, or last meeting, when you showed the budget, that said if we continue to spend at the same rate but with less students, we were going to be about $2 million in the hole. And so, our CFOs said, well, we've asked that they give 5% across the board. And, you know, when I look at a business, you don't normally just go across the board. You go and say, hey, why am I in business? What is value added to the business and what's non-value added to the business? And so, just taking 5% across the board, I figure that's going to actually impact the kids more. So, we need to look at maybe less travel, less eating out, less stipends, things like that that don't directly impact the kids instead of just taking 5% across the board. We need to clearly let the public know what is value added? What do you feel is value added, and what do you feel is non-value added? And if our goal is to teach kids, then we definitely don't need to be cutting budgets that has anything to do with kids. We need to cut budgets from things that don't cut from kids. And the problem with our budget is it's so heavy loaded on labor. 81% of our budget goes to labor, so you can't really cut there. In fact, you're fixing to add another $3 million per year hickey on top of that, so you only have a 20% delta that you can cut from. And so, I would hope that it wouldn't come from programs that directly help the kids. I would hope that it would come from programs that, you know, maybe we don't need to do some stipends, maybe we don't need to go to some, you know, conferences, maybe we don't need to eat out, maybe we can zoom into those conferences instead of flying people there. So, I would just hope that you would clearly notify the public what you feel is value added so that we have a chance to get into your mindset and then show us where you're going to cut. But just cutting five across the board, I feel like impacts the kids more than it should. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pasetti. All right, we're going to move forward with our agenda. Next is we're going to conduct our Finance and Audit Committee Workshop, and we're going to start with a report from Royal Brandon, but I should have turned that over to you to say that.
Thank you, Dr. Kingman. We'll still invite Dr. Brandon on a budget update report.
Good evening, Dr. Moran, Dr. Kingman, Board of Trustees. You have in front of you this evening a, just a draft, proposed budget. As we spoke last month, we talked about revenue for the district, and so, as you can see, from last year, the top graph, 2023 to 2024, 1 million, a little over $1 million less. And we kind of talked about SHARs, the changes that the state and at the federal level that were made, and then some loss in student enrollment, you know, affected that, and that as a goal across the district, we see the need. When you think about insurance for our employees, the one thing that's a benefit across the district is certainly if we're able to provide a free insurance policy for all of our staff. So, whether that's whatever worker, whether you're in the cafeteria, you're working grounds, custodial, all the way to the superintendent, being able to provide a free insurance policy for our staff across the district is certainly a goal. And so, we sat back in, you know, we talked about the 5% cut that directors were able to make in each of their budgets to work toward reducing and getting to a balanced budget, which we also talked about was difficult, right? At this day and time with no increases from the state at this point and inflation across the board in every department. But we were able to do that, and we see in front of you at the bottom, the proposed budget at zero, that does not include a raise, okay? What it does include is a $59 increase in employee insurance so that we're still able to offer a free policy to those that want to take it throughout the district. One of the ways that we were able to do that historically, we've talked about, we've had somewhere around the low 80 percentile of employees that take the insurance, and then, but we've always funded that at 100%. So, we went back and took that, captured that 15% that we've been over year after year and moved that into employee insurance to help pay for that. So, we feel like that's a plus across the board for every employee in the district. And then, we'll have to have hard conversations, right, about whether we do a raise. So, the idea is that we've balanced the budget, and now the conversation is, are we in an environment with the inflation that we have that we, in some way, offer that pay raise in the district? Several different options that we could talk about and form to have for you before next week. We'll talk about this a little more in the compensation package. We could have a deficit budget. Approximately 60, 65% of the school districts in the state of Texas right now are adopting deficit budgets because of the loss of ESER funding. Most of those are because of the employee raise, right? They got it to zero, and then the only thing that they could do is to pull that money from general fund. We've talked about our general fund was, has been very healthy. The board has made certainly very wise choices through this spending of ESER and supplanting some of those funds along the way as we were directed by the, not only by the governor but by the commissioner as ESER rolled out. And so, the, at one point, the $80 million fund balance, and then we've spent, we'll spend approximately $20 million in the two building projects in the district at Fannin and at McGill. So, as we look to next year's budget, we look for that to still be 60 million. The advice, right, from the state, from TASB, from TASBO, is to keep a minimum of three months in fund balance. That would put us at six months. So, feel confident in that we would have a healthy fund balance at that point. If the board would like to do the raises, we could take that money out of fund balance, but it would be a deficit budget for this year, and that we would have to plan moving forward so that that would be covered. We've talked about what those things look like. Those are hard choices about being efficient, having, capitalizing on, you know, the population of each campus. Sometimes that's a hard conversation about school closure for campuses that have 160 to 180 students that have a much higher rate per student to keep the campus open. So, those are some of the things that we could talk about. We've talked about the opportunity of a one-time stipend that might, could also come from general fund, and it's mainly just that conversation about for every employee in the district, everybody's experiencing higher, higher cost for their home, for their automobiles, for their insurance, for their groceries. So, those are the things. We can do that in several different ways. We've talked about the TRE, the possibility of the TRE and acceptance of the three golden pennies is a win both for the community, for the district. And I think the main thing to capture on the idea of the golden pennies is that we commit to those three golden pennies as taxpayers in this school district, but then the state doubles that amount that's collected. So, those three pennies do produce approximately $2 million, but because of our effort to capture those, then the state doubles that amount, and so, they would fund 4 million. So, that could be a $6 million help to the district to help cover some of the costs. Our property and casualty insurance went up $400,000. That, that's serious, right? I mean, that's a serious inflation-type item in the district. HVAC, you know, we've talked about that across the district. So, when the state has kept the same basic allotment for years, but yet, all of the things that come along with what you need to do in a district for facilities and upkeep, those are the things that make it difficult. So, they honestly provide the golden pennies for reason. They really want us to take advantage of those at the state level, and that's one way that we can do it. I know that's part of our conversations moving forward. So, that's kind of, I just wanted to kind of open that up to questions to see what other information we might could put in front of you before next week, or any, anything that, any type of numbers that I can run for you, and the idea of a possible raise moving forward.
Can I ask just a quick question just on procedure? Is the appropriate time for us to discuss those now, or is it under item L for later as far as legally? Should we do it during compensation?
Is that the compensation plan?
That's the compensation plan.
It is a little bit of an overlap, so I think it's perfectly fine during the compensation.
I just wonder, since this is a report, if maybe...
There's no harm in discussing it now.
Okay, we can do it now. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay.
Questions for Dr. Brandon?
I know, Dr. Brandon, that as we see move forward with declining enrollment, or hopefully not, but at least with stable enrollment, again, any addition to payroll becomes a sustainable expense down the road. So, as, as we agree to it this year, or any henceforward, if we agreed to increase salary rates, it becomes a sustainable expense. So, what, what that means is, we incur it this year maybe as a loss, but it doesn't go away next year. It continues to roll forward. And I see that, but there might be some scenarios where you might show us some scenarios about what that amount would be.
Okay.
And maybe in effect, long-term beyond that. But I know that any increase that we give is going to be a sustainable expense, which is, makes it, makes it tough on the, on the board and pushes into a deficit budget.
Okay.
So, I know some of the problem is, obviously, 30% of districts adopted a deficit budget last year, assuming the state legislature was going to come in and approve dollars. And so, that numbers jumped to 70% of people assuming the state legislature is going to come in and change the number of dollars. We have been blessed that we, although we've, through supplantation, we've been able to keep, or keep balanced budgets throughout, even with the ESER, even with being able to give people ESER stipends and raises with that ESER dollars, we've been able to make sure that we could afford it down the road, which is why we're in the position we are now where we can actually have a balanced budget again. But I do understand that things cost more, but I am concerned about trying to write checks that we cannot cover, just assuming the legislature is going to come through and change the basic allotment for me personally. So, I would like to see us work up some of the stipend money. I understand for teachers and staff, it doesn't affect the TRS, and I, I do understand that, but we've been good stewards, and we have a fund balance that would allow us to temporarily ease their, the fact that things are costing more without increasing our M&amp;O budget in certainty the following year. So, I would like to see kind of how we could do that with stipend, and even if we could afford the stipend the following year, if the legislature did not come through, understanding that at some point, if 70% of the districts in the state are adopting deficit budgets, that we will have to, we will need to make it up to our people and their TRS, et cetera, if there's a way to do that legally. But in understanding that, although, at least for me, giving them a bonus and understanding that costs are real and appreciating what they're all doing, interacting with our students on a day-to-day function is important, but that we can't produce a budget that doesn't, that isn't sustainable.
And we have spoke to legal counsel, so that would be one that we, an option that we would come back with, the stipend. We'll research that, and, but we also did talk to legal about, could you, can the board approve a compensation package that allows for the pay raise contingent upon the legislature approving additional funding? And that's a possibility as well. That, or even the TRE. Those things, the compensation package could be in place, and then it could be, you know, whatever our options are, A, B, C, contingent upon the Texas Legislature approving additional revenue for school districts and/or the passage of the TRE.
So, we can, sorry, I just want to make sure, so I make sure I'm clear on what you just said. So, we could adopt a budget that said, we're going to give a 3% increase if it had, assuming our TRE, if we decide to go for that, passed, and then we could, if the TRE did not pass, we would not be held responsible for that budget.
Right.
Okay, for that.
Yep.
And the TRE, Dr. Brandon, is concerning the three golden pennies.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So, that's how, that's how the extra funds are.
Can I add something to that conversation?
Certainly.
So, we've spent a significant amount of time talking about the three golden pennies. The TRE is an option. Of course, the board hasn't acted on that. We're in the middle of the efficiency audit, which is, has to be done by October the 4th, and then we present that to the board in a public meeting and the public as well. But I think it's important to note that as we've talked about the VATRE, there is an opportunity for us to consider lowering our interest and sinking rate in August by three pennies. Now, this is a deeper conversation that we could spend all night on, but essentially, the board would, in good faith, say to the public, we, we can reduce our debt service rate. We have a debt service fund balance that we can use to, to offset this. We have hold harmless funds from the state that we can use as well, and our financial advisor has worked with us to project and has given us absolute green light, and we actually double-checked it. I told Dr. Brandon, let's make sure we're on solid footing. So, we've had several different experts look at this, but the board could, if they so choose, adopt a tax rate that's three cents less, and then look the public in the eye and say, we've done this, we're asking you to increase the maintenance and operations by three pennies. So, it's essentially no tax increase, but generates the 6 million more a year, and that's an option, and many school districts have done that. Most do it when their property values are going up. Ours are pretty flat right now, almost a break even, I think. So, it's something for us to discuss and for the board to consider, and we'll be giving you more information along those lines in the next few weeks as we discuss this and consider it. But that's on the table, and so, what that would do, if the TRE were to pass in November, that would be an immediate flow of revenue to the district from the state, and that would offset the pay increase and other things. That's one thing. Another in-house way that we can control, instead of depending on the legislature, is to continue to look at more efficient ways to handle our staffing and our campuses, and if we were able to do that, we could continue to reduce our staffing and save quite a bit of money. So, there's some in-house steps we can take that will only free up resources to give back to our employees in the form of pay increases.
Dr. Brandon, just because there are people in the room that don't know, can you just briefly explain M&amp;O versus INS? Just real quick, the three-minute version of it.
Okay.
Just so that we make sure that everyone's on the same page. So, when we're talking about tax rates and the cumulative tax rate, everyone is clear on what we're talking about.
So, our M&amp;O is our maintenance and operations fund that go to pay all things in the school district: salaries, electricity, school buses, tires, batteries, everything that we do in the district is from our maintenance and operations, currently at 60, .6949, 69.49 cents as part of the tax rate. And then, we also have the interest and sinking, which is a bond payment. So, once a school district is able to have a bond and build buildings, whatever that was set in motion within the bond, then you have to pay those bonds back, much like your mortgage on your home. And so, we have an interest rate to pay those back, and that is currently at .11741, so just almost 12 cents. So, as the, the interest rates have been good, you know, that's the, if there's a positive side to inflation, it's that usually the, we get the interest rates that are a little higher. So, we've been able to collect interest on, as we hold the bond payment, as the taxes come in and you hold the bond payment, you do collect some interest on that. And so, that has built up over time, and so, we have a fairly healthy INS, interest and sinking fund balance, and the idea is that if we drop the tax rate, those three pennies from, from 11 cents basically to eight, those three pennies, we could offset that with the fund balance. We could supplement that along with what the state is sending in from dropping from, from going from $40,000 homestead exemption to 100.
And the golden pennies would be the same $2 million collected locally, whether it was for INS and M&amp;O? Just move one category to the other?
Yes, sir.
But then, when it's in the M&amp;O category, we get an additional $4 million from outside of San Angelo?
Yes.
Okay.
A standard, yeah, a standard M&amp;O penny pays the same as a standard INS penny, but the golden pennies are more valuable, which we can collect, and so, if we can move those pennies from INS to M&amp;O, the INS we do be a, just setting the tax rate, and the M&amp;O, trading them into golden pennies would be a vote by the taxpayers in November, I guess.
Yes.
So, so, it would be the trust of, of, we portrayed to the public of taking those INS pennies and then moving to M&amp;O, and later, we'd give back the INS upfront and then trust that the public would bless us with the M&amp;O pennies, which pay more than, the golden pennies pay more than a standard M&amp;O penny that the state pays us with.
And just, sorry, one more clarification, just as, we refinanced our debt about five years ago before interest rates went up.
Yes.
When the rates were lower. So, as, when we did that, that's kind of what's created this gap. As interest rates have increased, we are not set with those interest rates any longer. We're set as far as our debt, because we locked in a low rate most of the last five years ago.
Right, we are paying those bonds back at a lower interest rate than when they were issued, back 2008.
Just a quick question. If we, and this may be premature, but if we elect to drop the pennies, we're married to that for that year, correct?
Correct.
Whether it passes or not.
Yes.
That's correct.
You have other questions for Dr. Brandon? Okay, thank you, Dr. Brandon. Sure appreciate that. Next, we've got a construction update from Mr. Henry. Welcome, Jason.
Thank you all for having me. We'll go ahead and jump right on in. The first project that we have is McGill Elementary School. Here's some pictures of the, all the supplies that have landed on the site. Right now, they've completed all of the sheet rock up to about 99%. There's a little bit in the office that they're working on, and then mud and tape is about 85%. The brick and stone is nearly completed on the outside. There's a few trim pieces that they have to do, and then they'll start working on the metal. Pay close attention to this picture on the left-hand side, this pattern. You'll see this throughout several of the other buildings as well. Like I said, the sheet rock is about 99% of the way done, mud and tape is about 85. This is the big, long hallway that goes through the middle of the campus, and they were finishing up on muddying and taping today. The next school is Fannin Elementary. Currently, they're, they're still pulling some wire. All the door frames and glass have been installed, ceiling grid's up, and the classroom lights are in as well. You'll see there to the left, that's the large parking lot that's being added for the employees. Today, they were oiling it so that they could start paving it this week. All the brickwork work is completed, and then there's lots of concrete that's been poured over the last probably three weeks. They've poured a ton of concrete. This is the bathroom inside Fannin Elementary. As you'll see there to the left, it's a very similar pattern as the one at McGill. They're also finishing up on all, pulling all the data wires throughout the building and making the connections. This is our SUSSA campus that they're working on. All the grid is up. All HVAC is going to be turned on later in the week, and then all the bathroom tile is about 90%, and the hallways will be let next. All classrooms have been painted fully, two coats throughout the building. Any questions on any of these?
Mr. Henry, you going to make it my school opening?
Our target, yes, thank you. Our target's August 1st for the completion.
For, that's for SUSSA or for Fannin, or both?
Both.
I was encouraged, encouraged to see that the paving was almost ready to pour at Fannin.
Absolutely, you and I both.
That'll make 100% difference in the outlook of that campus as they get that down and get the other stuff cleaned up around it.
Yes, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we'll go into our standard financial reports for July the 15th. First of all, we have the bills and accounts for May of 2024. That's on page nine through 12. Page nine still shows an unassigned fund balance of 52.864 million dollars with an assigned budget of technically 19 million. If we look at the revenue expense report, which I think is on page 12, it's going to show on our regular budget that we are at 75.1% of income or revenue and 77.6% of our expenses. Again, we are at a nine-month process in May, so that should be about 75%. So tracking just about right on, as far as percentages concerned, on our budget for May. If there's no questions on the budget, we can move to page 13 through 40, which is our check register for May. If there's any questions on any of those checks, I know that we have reviewed those. And usually, if we have any questions, we forward them to Dr. Brandon for clarification. But obviously, page 13 through page 40, a lot of checks. Didn't see anything that struck my eye in that list. I'm not sure if anybody else has a question. If not, we can move to page, I think it's page 43, where we see the June 24 revenues expense report. Again, unassigned and assigned balances remain unchanged. Page 46 shows our revenues expenses for June. We're at 106 point, 106 million technically, which is about 82% of our budget for revenue. And we're at 112 million, which is about 86% of our expense budget. We should be somewhere around 83%, so that's in June. We've got July and August to go, so we're within, right within limits of where we should be on expenses, revenues, expenses for that. Again, the state will make us whole here shortly. That's the one that usually lags behind until the last couple of months of the year. And then they keep it in their account for interest until they finally end up paying us, which is a, which is a good thing. If there are no questions on that, we can move to page 47 through 65, which is our check register for June. Again, I didn't see anything that stood out to me. Again, we continue to monitor the amount of bus rentals that we incur and try to constantly review that problem to make sure we are spending our funds as best as possible by either leasing or purchasing. So just a note. There are no questions on the revenues expense report for June. We can move to page 66 through 70, which is our May investment report. Technically, we've got 177 million invested with an interest of 350,000 for May. The rest, page 70 shows the diversity of the investments that we have there. Page 72 through 76 throws our June, shows our June investment report with 75.69 million invested with an interest income of 315,663 dollars for the month of June. And lastly, our quarterly investment report, ending in May of 2024. Again, it shows the investments, again, of 77 million invested with an interest of, for that quarter, March, April, May, 1,94,672 dollars. Those are our quarterly investment reports, and they also show diversity investments there. I don't think there are any questions on any of those investment reports. Not, we can move forward to, I think it's page 81 through 85, which shows our July budget adjustment. A couple of things, we're adding expenditures. One is 1.37 million for bus purchases that we're including in our budget. I'm assuming that those buses are coming in and we're having to pay for them, Dr. Brandon? So they're coming in, so they're going to be added to our fleet. We've issued a PO maybe a year ago, somewhere in there. And they're finally, finally coming to fruition. So we're moving that into our regular budget. Then also, we are moving $6 million into our regular budget from our assigned funds for construction projects that we're going to have to pay out basically June and July. So that, that, we technically had, what was it? I think we had 17 million in the, in the assigned budget for the construction projects. And so that expense will now move down to 11 million as we adjust that figure and move it into our standard, our standard budgets. There are some other adjustments, moving some funds internally to some different functions with no effect to our end budget. Not sure, page 85 actually shows both the adjustments and the increases. And page 86 shows the final results where the construction funds now committed and moved from 17 million to 11 million. If there's any questions to the July budget amendment, we continue to spend down that construction fund as we make payments for building completion. Page 87, 88 are April and May tax reports. 2023, excuse me, 2022 shows again, in May, the amounts collected of 63.532 million. In '22, with a 96.78% collection rate, compared to our '23 collection where our tax rate was compressed to 52.724 million with a collection rate of 96.81%. So collection rates are about the same. But again, as a, this is a point of reference, it's about $11 million difference between the tax rates between the two years when they, when we got our rates compressed. So there are no questions about the tax report. We move to page 89 through 99, which is our PO report. Lots of things being purchased during the summer. I found it interesting to see that we are increasing our safety protection with buying some security film to replace on buildings, to protect some of those vestibules that could be vulnerable moving forward. So again, we continue to, to try to increase our, our presence as far as being as secure and safe facilities for our kids to come to and go to school.
Mr. Dindal?
Yes, sir.
So I would point out, we did the state, we sent in the grant, filled out their paperwork to TEA for the Safety Cycle 2 Grant and received a little over $400,000. And that's what, we're using those funds for the mandated security film. So inside any of the vestibules, any place in the school district that has a piece of glass that you could reach a door handle has to have the safety film. And so we're doing that every campus in the district. And then we're also coming in, in front of the safety film with a screen. Now, it may look like a bulldog or an eagle or something like that. But what that does is shield those students that are on the interior of the building from being a direct target from someone. So both of those are being accomplished this summer, and we hope to have every campus done before the start of school.
Kudos to the district for that, because those funds were highly sought after. And we were fortunate to receive what we received. So thank you very much for your efforts on that, because those were definitely funds that were hard to come by to move the needle on safety and security. So thank you very much for your efforts on that. With that, Dr. Kingman, that concludes our report for, actually, May and June. And so I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Dindal. All right, before moving forward with our agenda, we're going to go into executive session under item 551.072, which is real property. All right, we have returned from executive session. It is 6:45. We took no votes. We took no action. All right, so now we will move forward with our agenda items. Agenda item number five is consider authorizing superintendent to negotiate purchase of real property. And we have some questions regarding that as a board. So we're going to ask you to present that next week to us as far as how that's going to, but we need that to be a real, regular agenda item at a regular board meeting.
Yes, sir. The, so we do, yeah, so I'll check out the, the.
Zoning, yeah, zoning and things like that. Let's, let's make sure that that, we do that as a regular board meeting. No, there's no need to do that tonight. So let's do that at a regular board meeting. Is everyone's okay with that?
Okay.
All right, the next is consider RFQ 24-018, which is a Lakeview temporary chiller rental. And Mr. Henry?
Tonight, I bring forth RFQ 24-018, Lakeview temporary chiller rental. During the '23-'24 school year, the maintenance department began experiencing problems with the chiller system at Lakeview High School. The chiller provides cooling for most of the main building, including the offices, dining area, and over 40 classrooms. The maintenance department kept it running during the school year but is now experiencing more freon leaks than they can repair. Park Hill's architects and engineers have been on site to begin the development of plans. Due to the extent of planning and long lead times on equipment, we need a temporary solution to cool the campus during this planning phase. The maintenance department reached out to three vendors who provide chill, rental chillers as an option. West Texas chilled water specialists can begin work on the temporary solution as soon as 8/5, August 5th of this year. This will ensure that the school will be cooled during August. The administration recommends the approval to rent a chiller from West Tex for one year for the total cost of $219,687.38. Do you have any questions?
Dr. Brandon, obviously, we're getting an estimate on a replacement. Do we have an idea of, Dr. Brandon, sorry. Mr. Henry, do we have an idea of what the replacement cost is going to be for that project at all? You got a good estimate yet?
Tony's got it.
Proximate?
Tony, sorry, Tony, why don't you come to the mic? Sorry.
If it, sorry, if it was as simple as just replacing the chillers, the chiller would probably be approximately, there's actually two 145-ton chillers. Each chiller is 238,000 to 258,000 approximately. That's current pricing. Now, when you update that system, you still have six huge air handlers that provide the airflow into the classrooms, into the cafeteria, the gyms, not the gyms, but the auditorium and all those things. Depending on what the specs are when the engineers get that figured out, we may have to replace air handlers as well. So the total project could approximately be up to $1 million to get it, all the work done, so. Yes, it's all original equipment over there.
2000, rebuilt it.
When they rebuilt, yes, when they rebuilt. Thanks.
Any board questions regarding the chiller? My only question, Dr. Brandon, this is going to come out of fund balance? Obviously, I think probably the whole board wishes there was a fix that could be a long-term fix once, as opposed to having to spend money on a rental in the interim. But I do agree with fixing it correctly and not just going and putting another chiller in there. If that's going to be, if it's going to be a recurring problem, and then other chiller is going to go out in just a matter of time, then we need to fix the problem for long-term solutions for the next, another 20 years, as opposed to just fixing it for another year or two.
Agreed, so it's going to be, it looks like it's going to be a year rental, so that'll buy us a little time to get a bid out and do the best possible replacement that we can do.
Yeah, and it, I mean, because it's not as easy as just replacement part. I mean, with it being over 25 years old and the different type of freon system. And then we've done LED lighting upgrades, so that makes a difference in, you know, what the capacity or the tonnage would be. So, I mean, Park Hill will have to look at that and then develop the scope. And then, you know how that goes, go out for bid. And then, once it goes out for bid, and then they order the equipment. So we can't not be able to cool Lakeview during that time, so.
We do, we do just need to work with enough haste that we're not raining this again next year.
No, I agree.
I had another, I had a question for you, Tony, when you walked on. How do they make this work? I mean, we're going to be renting a chiller, so what do they do? They go up there and?
Well, you have, yeah, you have two six-inch supplies and returns coming out of each, each of the chillers. They will make a big manifold that will, that they'll build a manifold that their one 300-ton chiller will connect to that and run through our air handlers. Now, the, the big question is if it's going to be a smaller chillers with the change in LED lighting, the lower the tonnage, the higher per ton chillers cost. And that's kind of crazy, because anything over 150, 150 tons, it's quite a bit cheaper than everything under 150-ton chillers. So I don't know if we're going to have a lot of savings or not. I just don't know how extensive, because when they engineer it, there could be some piping issues. That's why I say up to $1 million. I think that the piping issue, the piping is going to be fine. But our chiller, all of our air handlers are inside the school. And these air handlers are very large. They're, you know, they're 10 to 12-foot tall, and they are, you know, 25 feet long. So we can't just tear walls. They have, they have parts to retrofit those. So, you know, the housing is good, but we just have to look and see that everything else is fine. And the old chillers are R22, that's the problem. And as Jason said, through the end of, when it got hot again after Christmas, you know, we started having some hot temperatures in February and March, we were putting quite a bit of R22. And, you know, that, that stuff now, that freon now is like $3,000, you know, the drum. So it's, it's pretty expensive. And we just, we've got to, we've got to do something about it. Any other questions for me?
Yeah, so it's, it's not as, not like the standard, the new construction people, the new construction version where they are zoned off in, with different units, correct? It's an all-in-one?
Yeah, it's pretty much all of them.
With separate air handlers, yeah.
Right, there are six of them, but I mean, those six cover huge areas. Yeah, it's not, not smaller air handlers. And they're not on top, they're inside the building.
I think we all understand how hot it is in August and September and October.
And November.
November in San Angelo, so. Do I have a motion to approve RFQ 24-018?
Yeah, Dr. Kingman, with that, I'd recommend the approval of Tyranid chiller from West Tex for one year for the total cost of $219,687.38.
Do I have a second?
A second.
So a motion from Mr. Dindal and a second from Ms. Mizel Flint. Any other board comments?
One last question, when's, when's the installation? When could the installation be?
August 5th, is that right?
They're coming to do it? Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say the same, 7-0. All right, so now we're going to review our proposed agenda for our July 22nd meeting. Invocation, pledges, we have recognitions of our speech and debate and media honor roll, minutes, public comment, information. We're going to have a budget update, construction update. Let's see, so bills and accounts, financial statements that'll be regular. Proposed budget, amendment for district official budget. We discussed that earlier in our, uh, budget workshop. That'll be regular. Quarter report... Quarterly investment report will be regular.
That can be consent.
Oh, that can be... Quarterly can be consent?
Okay.
Quarterly is consent. If anyone has a problem with that?
Okay.
Uh, tax resolution and, uh, tax calculate... Or consider resolution of tax calculation, that will be, um, regular. Dr. Brandon, you ever have anything for us on that this evening?
No.
Okay. Uh, compensation plan, 24-25. Uh, Mr. Skelton? We talk about it tonight, we're gonna wait in next week. So that will be regular. Consider extracurricular status of the 4-H organization and adjunct faculty. That is something we do every year. It's an agreement with Tom Green County. Everyone okay with consent for that? Is there any comment on that? Okay. Tasby Board Policy Update starts on 129. There are a lot of them. Most of it is, um, specific language. There is some stuff on board and ethics violations as well as, um, school resource officers and getting up to date with new state legislation and library books getting up to date with new state legislation.
Correct. Dr. Kingman, that, um, EFB local was the policy I plan to go in the greatest detail, which covers that. And our district already had instructional resources and library materials separated. We were ahead of that. Uh, we already have a plan in place for library book reconsiderations. The biggest change per the policy is that it defines parent or guardian. And so we've had community members, um, submit library book reconsiderations in the past. But with the emphasis on parent or guardian access to their own child's education, we do need to explain that that would change our reconsideration process.
And that is per state legislation, correct?
Yes, sir. Per legal policy, yes, which we don't adopt, we just review. Local policy, you have to have the administrative regulations, which we have the process for the reconsideration. Um, but parents and guardians do have the most input on their own child's education.
And that's an EFB local, you said?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I didn't intend to go over... There are about twelve local policy. I definitely can. But it is very important that our community understands that this is per the legal framework, which the board does not adopt, just reviews.
Yeah. Okay. So we'll get a report on... Since that is a change, we'll get a report on that next week, so let's make that regular, um, just to make sure that we do that. Um, the next is Consider 24-25, waiver for optional flexible school day program, which is our PACE program. That is also a waiver we do annually. Is there any question regarding that? And whether or not that can be consent? Everyone okay with consent? Okay. So then, Consider Code of Conduct, which is, um... Do we have anything about that tonight? Mr. Kalmbach? And then we'll keep that as regular as well, because it's code of conduct and...
Yeah, so just quickly, um, you're getting the draft copy, if you haven't already, the draft copy of the Code of Conduct. Just a couple of things about it, so that you have it, so that you can review it before you would adopt it next week. We've changed the model. So typically, you have a model that you start with that is vetted and make sure that it has everything in it. And then you go through it and make sure that it fits our district. And we're changing the model this year. We were using the Walsh-Gaiagos model and we're switching over to the Tasby model. So the format of it looks different. So normally, what you would get is just what changes are made to it. But in this case, the whole format is changing. So just wanted you to be aware of that, that the format is changing. The language in it is almost identical to what the model we were using before. So when you look at it, you see highlights. Those are the areas that were slightly different and that highlighted areas, the language that we chose to go with. So, um, no major... There's no real major adjustments or changes to what, uh, what we've had in the past year, but, um, except for the format. So it might look a little different than what you're used to looking at.
And Mr. Kalmbach, just make sure. So that will be available online and in paper for anyone who requested it as far as parents and students before the start of school year.
Absolutely. Once... Yes, once it's adopted, then we will get it up on the website and in all the places that we have it, so...
Just to add to that, we will go over it in detail at the administrators' meeting on July 25th, so that our leaders know the changes. And then we'll post it on the website for parents and community members to see.
So as everyone looks through that this week, because I know it just came to us today, is there any questions for... We're gonna direct those to Dr. Moran. If we can email him with any questions, then Mizal can get back with us about those before meeting next Monday. So try and look through that beginning of this week, so he can have that before then. Uh, and then, I guess, any factors that, um... Any other areas where we are changing something for parents and students, um, that are highlighted? Maybe just a quick overview of that for our parents and, uh, students at this meeting next week?
Next week? Okay. And that was emailed to you? So that's how... That's the electronic copy for y'all to look at?
Okay. So that'll be regular? So we have a chance to go over that. Now we have Consider 24-008, which is athletic supply. And Mr. Henry's gonna come up right now.
This first one that I have is for the athletic equipment. This is an annual bid that we do that provides a catalog of different vendors for athletic department and campuses to buy anything athletic-related. Uh, this year, we had twenty-five respondents. Any coaches or anybody else who requests quotes will be required to get three quotes if the item is above 3,500. And we ask to approve... To approve the ones slated in the recap.
Any more or less than... More or less than last year?
It went down a little bit from last year. It went down seven.
Will we be buying from those seven? Probably not.
Probably not.
Yeah.
All right. So we'll... Any questions for Mr. Henry on that? Everyone okay with that being consent? Okay. The next is RFP 24-010. That's a placeholder. We will have a recommendation from admin next Monday regarding the video streaming rights for the athletics. Item 24, so let's keep that regular, since we won't have that in advance. 24-011, radio broadcast rights for SASD athletic events. Mr. Henry?
This one is our... For broadcasting our football games over to the radio.
Excuse me, um, just so you know, I have to recuse myself from this, so I'm gonna step out while you're talking about this.
No problem.
My husband works for Foster Communications.
We're not voting today. We're not voting.
But there... I can't be here for discussion, right?
Yeah.
Can't I?
I think it's not voting.
It's not, actually.
I thought that I always had a leave for discussion.
Yeah.
I think it's just voting.
Okay. Okay. Sorry. I apologize.
No problem. Uh, we had one bidder on this, and it was, uh, Foster Communications. And they are the incumbent. This will be the second time since I've been here that they've, uh, won this bid and they were the only bidder the two previous times as well. Central football will be on Kixi and Lakeview football will be on the fire. Do y'all have any questions over any of that?
We will need to keep... We'll need to keep that regular, so... Because Ms. Mizal Flint's gonna have to recuse herself from that. Consider 24-012, beverage and vending concession services.
The purchasing department advertised for the installation and operation of beverage vending machines for San Angelo ISD campuses, auxiliary facilities, and the sales at San Angelo ISD Stadium concessions. The initial five-year contract period for this will be from August 1st through, uh, July 31st of 2034. We received one bid and one no bid. The one bid that we received was from Concession Supply, Inc. of San Angelo. The owner-operator, Patrick Sherman, has over twenty years of beverage industry experience. He is proposing to stock a wide selection of products listed on the recap. Vending bottle product prices will remain firm at a current price of 225 for carbonated drinks. And he will also be adding some can machines throughout the district for $1.50. Uh, the administration recommends approval of concession supply of San Angelo to be our district beverage vendor.
And that will also need to stay regular, because Mr. Gaiagos is going to recuse himself from that one. This is... He knows the owner of that one. So...
Do we have canned beverages on campus now?
Do we have canned beverages on campus now?
No.
So we'll keep that regular. Uh, any other questions regarding concessions? Okay. Bid 20-014, curriculum and instruction materials.
This one's an adder. Uh, we do this regularly. There's an additional vendor that the curriculum department would like to have added to this bid. I received all of their information and it is, uh, Presto Assistant. And this would be good for... From now until January of 2026.
Any questions regarding that? Consent for that one? All right. 24-016, VATRE Planning Services is also a placeholder. Kinda talked about that a little bit in our budget discussion earlier. But let's keep... Since that is a placeholder and bids, uh, the RFP is out. Let's keep that as regular as well. All right. So Reagan Foundation and repair and showing work. So this is also a placeholder?
Yeah.
And because we don't have bids back yet. And so it will either be pulled from the agenda or, I guess, will be a regular agenda item, since we don't have the stuff yet there. All right. So now, we've all been waiting for item X. Board meeting dates and activities. So in your board book on page 193 is a list of all meetings. And also a calendar of annual meeting activities. First is our August 12th meeting. We'll... If we elect to... What's the right page? To request a VATRE, we...
Maybe the... So we need to back it up, and here's... Here's why. Because there's certain orders of events that happen to have to happen in August. If the board were to call VATRE on August 19th, then Dr. Brandon needs to publish the proposed tax rate and proposed budget ten days in advance, because we have to adopt a tax rate and a budget prior to calling an election.
So ten days before the night?
That's right. So that pushes us back into the week of the 5th through the 9th. The question really for the board is this. Uh, the week of the 5th, would Thursday evening, the 8th, be an acceptable option rather than the 12th? That way, we could have a really robust and healthy conversation about tax rate, budget, consideration of a VATRE, and get all of that worked out. Then Dr. Brandon would have, um, the ten days he needs to publish. And then we could consider those things on August 19th.
So I will not be here the 8th. I can change plans and probably be here the Monday, the 5th, if necessary, or... I don't know if that's too early. But I also don't have to be here for everything. Or we can do it Thursday or Friday. The Thursday, August 1st.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
What's the week before that?
Yep. That's right.
Thursday, August 1st, if that worked for people?
Uh, that would actually... That may create some issues, uh, on the timeline for... For instance, um... It's a... It's pretty tight, but August 5th is the deadline for TEA to calculate and make available a preliminary maximum compressed tier-one rate for districts. So there's this window of... We'll be getting information in from TEA. We'll be getting final property values from, uh, the county on the 25th of July. Uh, so we can make it work. I think we can make it work. Dr. Brandon, with the 5th?
It's safer. I don't know that we would have TEAs. I don't know that we would have TEA information on the compressed tax rate. On the 1st.
So, uh, would the 5th work, though?
Yes.
Is everyone present on the 5th?
Does that put you in a bind?
We'll be fine.
So you're okay with that?
It'll be fine.
Uh, good. Yep. I can make it work.
Everyone... It'll be a regular time, 5:45, but on the 5th. Okay. So we'll move the 12th to the 5th. Same time. 5:45. And we, um... And if for some reason I cannot be here that day, we'll... We'll start tomorrow.
Okay. And if it puts you in a bind, we can... I mean, we can move.
We'll be fine. We're good. It's good.
Sounds like you're taking one for the teeth.
We're good. It'll be okay.
Okay.
All right. The only other thing as far as activities that we need to just discuss as far as our board activities is our calendar of activities is the fact that, um, we do need to make sure that we... Everyone should have gotten an update on a superintendent eval schedule as far as goals for the district in the year. And we're gonna work to add those... Those things to this calendar of annual board meeting activities from 24-25, so to make sure that that's reproducible year after year. And we'll probably... Will we have some of that either in the August meetings?
And we can add... We can actually add rough draft for next Monday. for next Monday.
Okay.
So, you all will have that as a board to outline at least five board superintendent goals for the coming year. And that way, we can discuss them and massage them and make sure they're what we want to- and, you know, there's not a- it's a self-imposed timeline.
Yeah.
We can change them at any time, but we'll bring you some drafts of those at the end of this week going into Monday.
Okay.
Yep.
So, and then, we'll work on getting, just so that myself and y'all can hold me accountable to make sure that we do all of those things on schedule as opposed to our previous schedule, which has superintendent evals and other things at different times based on historical, how we've done historically. So, we will get that. All right. That is it. We have announcements of meeting next week, then our pre-agenda meeting is going to be August 5th, and our regular board meeting is going to be August 19th, so that date still works, correct?
Yes.
That's the last date it could be, but it works.
Yes.
Okay. Any other board comment or questions?
Dr. Kingman and members of the board, this will go out in your Friday fax, but while y'all are all here, July 30th is the new to District tailgate, and Dr. Moran has his jersey. So, if you would look for your jersey, we wear jerseys and comfortable attire. We did adjust the time slightly because of the heat. Dr. Moran will have his truck parked to signal kind of the start of the tailgate, and if you're available, feel confirmed with Mrs. Ramirez, and then you just go and greet new hires. So, instead of starting at 8:30, we are going 8:00 to 9:30 so that we can get out a little sooner.
And that's on July 30th? And that's July 30th?
Yes, Tuesday, July 30th.
Ms. Ramirez, will you send a calendar invite to everyone for that, please? Okay. All right, any other board comment or questions? All right, with that being said, then we are adjourned. Thank you.